... I have a meeting so to be responsible for Monday, April thirteenth, two thousand fifteen. This meeting is in the middle of the whole, Madam, uh, the chief. Um, this is a continuation of the special meeting, yeah. So we've already done both calls.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, uh, my item that you're referring to is the...
Before, before you start, um, I want to thank those that are here for your patience. We were in a closed session and we're not going to continue the regular meeting. But before we get started on this special meeting, I want to take a moment to remind the members of the public who are here this evening that it is important that our meetings proceed without any unnecessary interruptions. And I would ask that if you have a cell phone, that you turn it off and that not be any audible comments or conversations unless you're recognized to address the council regarding an item on the agenda. The city attorney has informed me that any action that's forced upon the council can be considered a violation of state law in the city order. And a person who caused the disturbance can be required to leave the meeting. So, clearly, some of that goes quickly by saying, "The council will be right and will appreciate everyone using common courtesy this evening and allowing this meeting to be conducted in a businesslike manner." And we'll go to the first item on the agenda.
Okay, the first item before you is a request from ASAT International Hotel doing business at the Detroit Marriott Southfield. They're located on the Northwest Service Drive. Um, this request is a simple, just, again, another transfer of ownership of corporate members. Um, the background investigation has been conducted and their taxes and water bills, everything that's current and favorable recommendations have been made to move forward with the transfer. The attorney, um, on behalf of the Marriott, Dave Iberhard, is present this evening in case council has any questions. At our last meeting, we decided to bring these items forward for approval at the consent agenda. But following this, I'd also like to discuss, should we just be taking some transfers like this just straight to the council since the liquor control commission has changed the way they are doing businesses? Any new type of establishment in the city we would bring before your honorable body? But a simple corporate transfer for an existing business that's already been here as long as all the departments have signed off, is there any reason to bring it before a call versus just going straight? So, if you could further that discussion as possible.
So, this is Dave Iberhard. Thank you.
All right, council, you have a question? Okay. Go to our, uh, under the consent agenda of our meeting on the twenty fifth of April. But the first raise is a issue council that we'll have to take a consent from this evening. Do you want any further transfers because of the change in state law to go directly on the consent agenda? Or do you want those to come to the full council? But any new liquor license would still come to the full council to get the discussion. And that's what she's asking us to decide on.
Based on the extent of the debate we had in that one, I think, maybe a lot of it is...
Yeah, any questions? Okay, so we will do transfers, consent, and rewrite into the council.
And just so you know, like, next week you will have another one out because it just came through the police department and everything is clear and it's a similar, similar situation to Marriott. So we'll have two hundred different chapters. Let's think of...
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item is the veto of Council's ruling of GP twelve fifty six and SP thirteen hundred as the mayor's...
Well, sure. Let me start by, uh, making a comment that, uh, you know, under our former government, the mayor provides a check and balance on, on zoning, on issues. Uh, the, the verdict really under four twenty says the mayor shall have the power to veto ordinances, resolutions, and even proceedings of the council. Uh, these, uh, vitos have to have the reasons therefore in writing, as they made, filed with the clerk within ten days, et cetera, et cetera. Um, when, uh, when this presented itself, uh, to council, uh, the city attorney, uh, brought forward a lawsuit which was Livonia Hotel LLC versus City of Livonia. And, um, the, um, the case was a party in hotel which was closed and liquor license was going to be put into it. You know, and the argument was whether or not, uh, this has been closed and whether liquor license was going to be... But the long story short, the mayor of Livonia vetoed this item. And, and it really is strange when you get back into this lawsuit, uh, that he'd been here some time, that, that one of the, one of the plaintiffs, uh, raised, uh, Raven versus City of Southfield, which was, uh, brought about by my veto, um, back in the, in seven, nineteen seventy-six, uh, which was the Raven Gallery, uh, liquor license was going to be put in a lumberyard. And I thought that it was a unsafe facility for, uh, liquor license and that they were going to use the second level where boards were being staffed and those kinds of things. And there was no, um, uh, way that they could strengthen upstairs so that if you had a lot of people there, it would fall. Anyways, the court ruled at that time, it went only to Supreme Court, and the court ruled that, that I could not veto liquor licenses, uh, because, uh, I was not a legislator. And, uh, and that is the only lawsuit that's even ever lost. But anyway, so, um, keeping with the, with the rights of a, of a mayor and, um, I do wish I had a vote, but when I did have council presidency, but I am the acting mayor and, and I, I still it, um, very important that I show my opposition to the council vote of that was, uh, was held on March twenty-third. Um, the court took in a special use, uh, and that would be a liquor license into a hotel that was either closed or previously closed or something. And, um, and the arguments were whether or not it was closed, if it was open, then the liquor license could be transferred into it, whatever. Uh, in this particular issue that was handled on March twenty-third at the regular meeting, um, council approved the, um, GP twelve fifty six by three votes in support and one against, and SP thirteen hundred with three votes in support and one vote against. Uh, site plans do not require a public hearing, and it kind of separated them a little bit, um, from a site plan to the special use, uh, because I, I took into account that, uh, the mayor has the power to veto all ordinance, resolutions, and proceedings. And I thought that was part of, uh, proceedings that I had the right to, uh, to veto, even though it was a special use and, and a site plan. And, uh, the, um, city attorney, uh, did look at this lawsuit and said that, uh, it would be okay to veto if, if the council would, uh, would provide the mayor, mayoral powers, uh, under, under the site plans and special uses. In other words, you would have to manual ordinance, uh, so that telling the mayor that it's okay for you to veto this item. And I feel that, that takes away the, the, um, the powers of the mayor because council then says what ordinances they could, uh, give the mayor the right to veto and knows that to not. Now, back in the days of the Raven versus, versus Rafferty in Southfield, uh, it stated that I was not a legislator. So that kind of sets the stage that I'm not a legislator. So I have the power as of a mayor, which then is a separate action on an issue. And so, what, what I looked at, and, and again, mentioning that, under the ordinance, if council would state and provided, and provide a provision that the mayor be permitted to veto, is that correct?
It would be included in the zoning ordinance.
It would be included in the zoning ordinance. And I said, "Well, that just says that on this item, you don't have any right to veto. On this one, you're a legislator, you have no right to veto. And on this one, you don't..." And I'm saying this, then where is the power of the mayor and the, and the balance of power between the council and the mayor and its rights to veto under the proceedings that, that the charter says you can veto all ordinance, resolutions, and proceedings excepting for the ones that council specifies you can't veto? It doesn't make sense to me. So, um, I did veto this item. Uh, I, I do say that, that the, um, city attorney did, uh, tell me that, that I was kind of in error, and that's fine. You know, it's, it's the way we operate, that the, um, the mayor appoints his city attorney and he works for the council. You know, another little great, little piece of charter that we have here. So I didn't bring my attorney here, but anyways, there's people here. Uh, anyways, so some of the reasons that I, I thought that, uh, that this was a proceeding that I could veto was that it was so unreasonable to vote for something that the city planner opposed this non-residential intrusion to single-family residential area. And I did have an Exhibit A, which was a pass. Those are all the reasons the city planner... And then the planning commission came along and voted six to nothing against the request. Um, it states very clearly that the location, size, intensity, and periods of operations of the proposed uses would be objectionable by the residents abiding the property proposal. And also, it would have a negative impact on the entire residential area as a whole. I then also stated that, uh, on March eleventh, two thousand fifteen, the city council members and city officials, including myself, met with over a hundred homeowner association leaders to organize a coalition to attract more residents to the City of Southfield. For the purpose was to maintain a strong quality of life, protect property values, provide safety in the neighborhoods, to maintain quality services, and to buffer residential homes from the inclusion of non-residential proposed uses. And that's what we preached to the coalition of, of homeowners that came to us on, on March eleventh. And, um, and I then looked again at, at the veto of the City of Livonia. And, um, and I talked to Sue again today, but, you know, I, I talked to, uh, the legal in Livonia and, um, and learned that in two thousand three, uh, yes, the veto, uh, was, uh, voted by the council and overruled the mayor, and it was contested. But somewhere in between two thousand three, two thousand seven, the mayor did veto another special use. And it went through, it was supported by council, or, or it was upheld by the city and the mayor, uh, because it was not contested. And, and so, see, this item that we're before us tonight is not, in my mind, contested by the petitioner. It is just voted against by the city council. So I, um, in, in good conscience, I just felt that, that we should review this, reconsider this item. Um, I, I have a, a paragraph that ends my veto. It says, "We, mayor, council, and staff have to be committed to developing a strong coalition with our residential associations and respecting them when there are negative intrusions into their neighborhoods. Businesses, while expanding, must be sensitive to their surrounding neighbors, and as good stewards of the city, we must work together with both for a better Southfield." And, uh, so, council, I did veto this. Um, it was, uh, basically, uh, opposed by the city attorney, uh, for presenting this item because of the, the case in, in Livonia. However, I don't think that our charter is the same as Livonia's. I don't think that, that this was contested, uh, in the courts. This was just approval by the council and rightfully so could be vetoed. And, um, and I asked, uh, council to reconsider this item and, um, and protect the veto of the mayor's office. Since I am leaving this office in November, there's members here on the council who'll be mayors. And, and that same rules are going to abide by them. And they may come upon a special use that they may feel that they have to, to, uh, vote on or veto, uh, and, and exhibit their balance of power within the confines of voting. And, um, and, uh, I just don't think that these councils, uh, either now or forever, would ever grant the mayor, uh, power to say, "Okay, on this special uses, you have the right to veto." It's, it's a thing that is added by the voting legislators, and I don't see any reason why they would even impose that upon themselves to give the mayor more power to veto anything. So I stand on the charter and the provision of four point two oh that, that I could rightfully veto this thing, uh, because I think it is the right thing to do. And, and also because of the, uh, rather that this, uh, was, this item has not been contested by the church and is basically to be reconsidered at this time by council members and like to have them reconsider.
So, obviously, with all due respect to the mayor, I think he and I see this case a little bit differently. Um, so the Livonia Hotel versus Livonia case was a two thousand three case. I remember when it came down. I remember, um, Mr. Barris and I had a conversation, and he indicated at the time that he had spoken with the former mayor to indicate that, you know, this is, this is a problem now in terms of land use. Um, but in any event, you know, the, the substance of the case is there is a state law that says on a special land use, okay, specifically, you have to have in your zoning ordinance, you must specify the following. You have to specify the body or official responsible for viewing, reviewing, and granting approval for the special use. You have to state specifically the procedures required for the application, review, and approval of a special land use. So that's what the state law says. Then you, you do have a charter provision. In our, in our case, it says the mayor has the right to veto all ordinances. Livonia's is worded a little bit differently, but when you read the entire veto section, it's very clear in there that the mayor had the right to veto ordinances, proceedings, the same thing. It's just, it's just worded a little different, but the substance of ordinances are in there. So this case, the court was called upon to decide, in Livonia's case, there was a charter provision for a mayoral veto, but in the zoning ordinance itself in the City of Livonia, they said for a special land use, much like ours, there has to be a recommendation by the planning commission, and then it goes to the council for approval or denial or approval with conditions, and then it stopped. There was nothing in the zoning ordinance per se that said the mayor then could veto it. So the court said, "You have a state law that says you must be very specific in your zoning ordinance and tell us what the process is and who does what." And so Livonia, since you didn't have a provision in your zoning ordinance that said, you know, at the end of all this, the mayor can veto it, it isn't there. And just because it's in your charter, the state law trumps the city charter. And I honestly, when I read our charter and I read our ordinance, I see no, you know, no gray in terms of what we have versus what Livonia had. Again, the wording isn't exactly precise, but it's the same issue. We have a zoning ordinance that says, "Here's how you get a special use," and we tell you what you have to do, and we say you have to go to the planning commission and you get a recommendation, and then it goes to council. And again, that's where our ordinance stops, and it says nothing about a mayoral veto. So I see no substantive difference between the Livonia Hotel case and our situation. And on that basis, and I, and we have had numerous conversations, and again, I respect your position, but I don't see that based on this case, with our zoning ordinance the way it is today, I don't see that your veto is effective.
But this case was brought forward because, because the, the participants wanted to contest it.
But I think they would, mayor.
But this was not contested.
But it would be. If, if you, if you vetoed it...
I don't know, I don't know, I don't hear anybody coming and telling me or sending me a letter saying, "If you veto this, I'm going to contest it." And, and then where does it start and stop that they go through the entire zoning ordinances and start saying, "Well, the mayor, mayor can't veto, veto this and can't veto this." What, what's left is the mayor's going to sit up in dumb, dumb city and just write proclamations and letters and say, "Hello, folks, I can't do anything about it. Balance of power is gone, and, and I have no protection under the law."
And, and again, all the court was saying is that state law is going to take priority and precedence over a city charter because we're just a creature of the state, right? So state law is prior and has all the, 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 everything has to be in accordance with state law. And from state law said to cities, if you're going to have a special use procedure, you have to be very specific of how, how you're going to operate it and what it does and who approves it. And so your charter can't trump that state law. And that's really simplistic in a simple way. That's what Livonia Hotel says.
So, in other words, on special use and site plans, there should be a provision under the last sentence that, "Mayor, you have the power to veto..."
Correct.
"...if you don't like it."
Correct.
And then have to state that.
And we have to say that the mayor shall have the power to veto pursuant to Section four point two oh of the charter. But you put it in your zoning ordinance, and then it's there.
What else is there to veto?
I, I...
I mean, there's nothing else to veto. I mean, procedures...
Until this two...
I mean, ordinances, that means all the ordinances thrown out. Take the charter and throw the charter out as far as ordinances.
But all ordinances are not land use ordinances.
Most ordinances are though.
Well, we've done a lot of ordinances.
But, but most ordinances that, that, that are, I, I guess, sensitive to our community...
Are.
Now, ordinances like the woodlands that we have on tonight and things like that, sure, they're important to our community. But, but the ones that really, really hit the neighborhoods is when, when there's intrusion into the neighborhood or something happens in their neighborhood and they want you to correct it. And, and so, and so that's, that's what I'm saying is, so the balance of power is, "Do this, and I'll pat you if you like it, and if I don't, I'll hit it." And what you're saying is, "No, I can't do this."
Well, I would say this. I think before two thousand three, I think all of us would have believed that the charter intended that the, an ordinance was an ordinance under the charter, and that would have included a land use ordinance. So I think if you go back before two thousand three, I think the intent of the charter was the mayor could veto a land use issue. So I guess I have no problem, I don't see it's a shifting of, of the balance and the checks and balances for it to now be included in the zoning because I think it was always intended to be.
The council has to use up its power over the charter and say, "Hey, master mayor, hey, you know what? I think I'm going to give you more power. I'm going to say, you know, the special use over here, you, you know, I'm going to say, sure, you can judge me, you know, you can veto me." Who in the world has ever seen a council to do that?
Well, I suppose that...
So, so it takes you right out of the picture.
Well, but, but, but you're, you're looking at one side. The other side is the state law says you have to be very specific. So what council would be asked to do is to say that our intent is the charter provision which says the mayor can veto all ordinances, we'll just make sure we say that right in the zoning ordinance. And now we've complied with state law and there's no issue.
But since your zoning ordinance are already intact, you'd have to change...
We have to amend the zoning ordinance.
You have to amend all the zoning ordinances to say, "Mayor, you don't like this. Veto it."
Well...
And, and I don't know how you could ever get a council vote to give more power to a mayor.
I'm not sure if more power, because I think everyone would have agreed...
Tell me where the checks and balances anymore.
I, I don't disagree with you substantially. I'm just trying to, to deal with it, like, legally, under what the state law says.
Now, go back to the Raven versus Rafferty in Southfield, right? They say, "I'm not a legislator."
Right.
And I said to them, "The legislative process was used." The legislative process was that council approved a license, and part of that process was that the mayor vetoed it. And the court said, "You're not a legislator." Boom. All right, so now, since I think what's coming, you can't, the mayor can no longer vote veto the license. Now, today, today, we're talking now about the, the most, I guess, argumentative parts of the ordinances that come out where people are disturbed over our special uses because those are the ones that don't fit.
Mm-hmm.
And those are the site plans that don't fit. So anything that doesn't fit, the mayor can veto. And that, and that is against checks and balances because, because those are the ones that ninety percent of the time come before council is something that is unusual. Not the one that's written, yeah, black and white, this is it.
Right, right. I, again, I, I don't...
I still, I still feel the council that, had they reconsidered this item, protected the neighborhood, I, I, the church will do fine. Uh, I, I, I can never vote against a church. I do oppose a church taking part of a subdivision, intruding into a subdivision, and make it unlivable for those remaining. And that I really object to. And, and no say so. And now, no say so at all, because they can't even go to the mayor.
Yeah, uh, at the, um, at the meeting in which the council voted, uh, three in favor and one against, and mine was against, um, Councilman Sider made a statement that there has been precedent set in other areas where, that, and I would just justify by precedent setting in other areas, such as daycare going into neighborhoods in between house groups. I think you said a beauty salon, something like that. Um, and then later on, you mentioned L T U. And I, and also the Buddhist, uh, the Buddhist, uh, what do we call it, church or worship center over on, um, the beach, uh, on the beach. I disagree that those were precedents declared. In the, in the case of the daycare and the houses where they went between houses, the neighbors on both sides approved them. They were okay with it. There wasn't one exception, a nine-mile road where there was a daycare center with a full house, and this one wanted to add another house right next to it, and the neighbor said, "No." They were very upset about it, traffic's so political, and the council turned it down. The other one was the Buddhist situation, which Mr. Sider cited, but that's not in the neighborhood. That is not a neighborhood. It's large tract of land on the west side of the city that has, people have up to ten acres. And there, it wasn't a neighborhood, it was an existing house. Just, it's, it's not a comparative situation, it's not a precedent. So on that basis, I think it was an inappropriate decision. Um, there's, what's happened here is the church in getting, in doing what they're doing, they are setting the precedent. This is the precedent that's being set now by the church. And that's why I object because I think exactly as they have said, that the residents should not have their neighborhood, um, they, in other words, the short version is, the church that they had a parking problem, they took their problem and made it the neighborhood's problem. And, you know, there's something about doing to others, the golden rule, wasn't observed here. And I, that's my feeling. I think it's unquestionable that this should not be done with the neighborhood. I know the vote's not going to change, but I wanted to let everybody know that, uh, I think it's wrong, and I think the church could have done something different. And, uh, I can, I still can't understand how the, um, veterans, uh, the, the place across the street, what am I, what am I talking about?
Oh, VSW?
The VSW, probably. It's right across, I really recognize it across Telegraph, but they have a bus. It's right across, I really recognize it across Telegraph, but they have a bus. You know, I, I, I think that the neighborhood was made, made to make, uh, forced to make all the concessions, and I think that's wrong.
Uh, just wanna correct Ms. Seymour. Um, my, what I did say was that, oh, I'm about consistency. You may not like the rules, but, uh, we should be consistent. And what I said was, uh, when it comes to the special use of the house, we have beauty salons in houses, we have tax, uh, preparers, accountants, we have landscapers in houses, we have childcare in houses. Um, so it, you know, this happens all across the city. And as far as, um, uh, the, the parking, I mean, right down the street, we tore down, allowed houses to come down, we vacated the street and took two houses down behind the funeral home. Uh, on twelve mile, we, years ago, we let Lear go into the neighborhood. The Buddhist, uh, center on beach is in a neighborhood. It is residentially zoned. Uh, it happens to be the house on beach and not on Maplewood, but it is in, it is in a neighborhood. Uh, and neighbors did talk about having a parking lot. Um, we, uh, and then in the case of LTU, LTU, um, has bought up over half of Circle Drive. And this council permitted a dormitory to be built in what was a neighborhood. Um, I know, Ms. Seymour, you're gonna always want the last word, but that was, um, my intention. It was, it was saying that we've done these things, uh, I'm about consistency. Um, I also felt that there was a need for compromise here. And actually, if the first proposal, uh, had been accepted, which was a modest, just bump out the fence line, uh, uh, ten, twelve feet and do a row of parking behind the church, I think everybody wouldn't be a lot happier today. Um, I do wanna also add that, um, shortly, uh, maybe a week or so after, uh, the vote, um, I was invited by a number of residents on Sergeant Street if I would come and meet with them on a Sunday afternoon to explain where I was coming. Um, I had a, a two hour, very civil conversation with, uh, people on Sergeant Street. Uh, they weren't, you know, they didn't agree with me, but they did appreciate the fact that I came. What I left that meeting with, though, there was something I got out of that meeting. And that was, um, that the neighborhood does not trust the church. And it's evident in the planning notes, which I read every word from every planning meeting that where this came up for over two years, um, that darn fence has been an issue over and over again. The fact that the fence was, was pierced, and that, um, they were, uh, the church was going into backyards on, on what's now the picnic area, uh, the fact that they put down a blacktop pad that I didn't know existed until I walked the property, um, uh, the fact that the fence is not properly maintained, uh, it's leaning over in places, it's uneven in others, honestly, it doesn't look very good. Um, and, uh, the fact that, uh, and, and I don't know this for fact, uh, I shouldn't say "and" the fact, but, uh, and their assertion, um, and I, I believe them, uh, that work went on in the house that they want for accounting center without, um, uh, before the special use permit. Uh, I don't, uh, again, I had not been in that house, so I can't verify that, but there is a level of distrust, um, where, where I was coming from, uh, I know people in the church, I actually, I know more people in the neighborhood than I do in the church, I would add. But, um, the pastor I've known for years, they've always, uh, shown me the people of goodwill. And I know they do good things in the community, and their property facing nine mile is very well maintained with community pride awards. Um, I expect, uh, and this is what I told Pastor Roberson, "You're going to be held to a higher standard. You need to maintain your five properties on Sergeant Street, and you need to address the fence." Um, and at our meeting of March twenty-third, he indicated, he paused, he checked with, uh, the architect and, and the facility man, Mr. Trout, and came back on television in front of all of us and said he would build a masonry wall. And that would go a long way to, um, easing this, this situation with the neighbors. Um, I understand from talking to Mr. Prost that the church came in Friday and, and met for a while regarding where they go from here. Uh, they have to come back to the planning department because they need, need, um, since there's been conditions placed on this special use, they need to come back with an updated plan. Um, and, so we'll wait and see, but as far as I'm concerned, a masonry fence is coming. Um, he said it, we were all here, and that's a big issue here.
Um, I want to, just one thing, when I said before about the, um, Mr. Cyber's saying the precedent was set, we cited LTU, but LTU is a unique situation because our whole circle.
No, Beth, you could argue the same thing.
No, it is not, no, it's, 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 they, LTU couldn't move, this church could move. LTU has their drive, they go all the way around this circle, they have no place else to go. I wouldn't call that any comparison to what's going on at the church. Just one question I have.
They could go down to the center drive.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sure, and to direct a, a comment to, to council, I don't want to, Mr. Cyber, but, uh, you know, when you look at the site plan, thinking about the special use, you look at the site plan, and, and I'm the one who raised that, that thought of going all the way down and put parking all the way down the back and leaving everything on Sergeant Street alone. And that would give them the parking which they're really talking about wanting, uh, and then you added a wall, so that would be a wall and then the parking and everything on Sergeant Street and across from, from the, on the north side would have been left the way it was. But what happened irrespective of the wall, it is not going to add parking, the parking is gonna be jutting into the residential. And, and not only that, but adjacent to that, adjacent to that, you have, you have a, a park that goes all the, all the way through on the site plan, all the way through to, all the way through to, you know, on Sergeant Street and the, and the house that they own. So there's gonna be parking here for the park or picnic grounds. They're, they're gonna, they show a, a, a wall, a regular wall here so people can hit through here. So what you're really creating is, is parking and a park. And, and, and so it's not just intruding with parking, you're gonna have, they're gonna have all kinds of, of picnics, parties, you got a picnic area, another, uh, one, one side you got a picnic area, then you got another picnic area down here. So, so now you got three houses that are gonna be left all by themselves, and, and right down the side of one of them, it's gonna go all the way down to Sergeant Street, parked. Uh, I don't know if I could build a park next to your house like that and have, every Sunday I wanna have a barbecue, that, that you're gonna make, sure you're gonna call City Hall and say, "Hey, what the heck's going on here?" We find that already with, with Bradford Academy over here in Green Dolphin. When you give them an inch, they'll take a mile. They're not satisfied, they, they came in for parking, but that's not really what they're looking for, because you offered them parking. And there's, there's nothing against the church, I'm just saying is that, that, you know, if, if we're going to really be honest with ourselves, you know, there's a lot of situations that you cited, but each one was looked at separately. And, and, and this has to be looked at separately. And how much of an impact does that have on those neighbors? How much impact does it have on these neighbors? And the choice is, is, is whatever you decide, and, and what I see is this is gonna be disturbing the whole neighborhood. Not just three, four, five parcels, the whole neighborhood. That's a short street, a short street, people take shortcuts through there now, you know, traffic from the church go down that way, you know, to make a right hand turn. I mean, it's, it's, uh, I don't know, I, I just think that, well, councils, I don't have any decisions on this, I guess, since, where's my attorney at? No, I, I just, you know, I just cannot see council giving permission to, to a mayor to give him more power so he can creep into their power place, and it, it just doesn't work. Yeah, I don't know what council in this world that's gonna, even in Washington D.C., that give the, the president more power, and Congress gonna give this one, give the governor more power. It doesn't happen in politics.
I thought you asked a question, did you have any on this?
I want, you know, a question that came up from some of the residents was, um, okay, uh, you put these restrictions on, on New Oak, uh, so what happens if they violate? And, um, my answer to that was, well, if the cit, if they're violating the, uh, the special use permit, then the city has a right to go after, after the church. And if, um, what I'm not clear on, can, can the special use be withdrawn?
It can, you, you, it can. Obviously, you'd wanna do a due process.
Sure.
Um, procedure for revoking the, the special use permit. But certainly, the conditions have meaning, and if the conditions are not met, then the special use permit fails. So absolutely, if, if that, again, I wanna make sure we did a due process and we, we actually permitted, we had evidence and we permitted the church to rebut anything, but absolutely, it could be done.
Thank you.
All right.
Um, Madam President, I have had a request by the president of South Bird Association to be recognized, and I believe I can recognize by the elects. We've done that in the past by the council person.
Yeah, I, I think there's a general rule that's been done, if you request the council president.
I would like to recognize which are, uh, let's apply them.
I'm not gonna make a mistake of reading it, I didn't hook like I did last time. Um, council members, I'm in West White, I'm president of the South Bird Association. Uh, my first, my first request is to follow the neighbor, neighbor, uh, mayor's suggestion to reconsider this. Uh, seeing that that might not be the case, I have been called by many associations and talked to, and they're very concerned. Um, they, they see this as precedent setting and that they're unprotected. Um, the commission worked on this for two and a half years. Um, the pastor said, "We've tried to compromise," but, but the compromise was the commission said, "Go back and try it again. Go back and try it again. Come back and try it again, because you're not meeting the eight standards." And, uh, and the last time they came back, in, in fact, one time they came back with a plan to, to put store buses back there. And, uh, the planning commission said, "No." And they came back and finally the latest plan, and they, they voted down six to nothing, because they did not meet the standards. Um, the church in January purchased the VFW hall. Um, I went over there, and there are a hundred and seventy-one plus parking spaces. It's within actually walking distance of the church, you don't have to go across Telegraph. Um, and they have a building there. I've talked to the residents, and, and Mr. Cyber said, uh, uh, we need to see some compromise. We want that masonry wall which was promised, and I believe that it was stated, and the pastor and, and Jonathan Trout and his people discussed it for a while and said that they would go along with the masonry wall. We feel that we need a masonry wall to protect our area. Um, and as a matter of fact, the area residents said that they would be willing to give the church, not give, to have the church acquire twenty feet of their property to run the wall straight across, not go in and out and in and out. And this is a compromise that we're willing to do. We wanna keep our neighborhood intact. And, and I would hope that you would amend it or whatever you would do to it if you're not going to reconsider it totally to do this. And then, the counseling center, the perfect place is the VFW. They've got plenty of parking, they're away from the church, uh, they own it. And so I would ask you again to relook at this and consider the neighborhood, because this is all we have. They can go home, we can't. This is our home.
Mr. Weigand, this, of course, I've heard of that. Um, I think that's an excellent suggestion. If the property owners that, uh, the three or four that are remaining on that side of the street, the lots are two hundred and fifty feet deep, um, and that was brought back, I, I think that is a compromise.
And, and the masonry wall could go all the way across, and they would have adequate parking, nice and clean.
Um, planner's here, so he's taking notes.
He's taking notes, but I'm, I'm not sure if, how would that work?
Well, the church would have to agree to that.
Right, yeah. And so with the property ours, I mean, I don't know, I think it was.
Well, I think Mr. Weigand was speaking for the property owners on Sergeant.
But I don't know what the, you know, sometimes negotiating the purchase price could be a little bit.
Sure.
Who knows?
Well.
I think it's worth investigating. Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Either what they get, what they, what they get now, or something that they could live with guys. I, I think that would be part of negotiations.
All right. This was a very tough decision, I know for myself. We have approved various, um, special requests within the neighborhood. I'm thinking of the daycare that I voted for, voted against, the church that I voted against on beach, so everyone has to be looked at differently. But I'm wondering, council, if you're willing, and we can take it up at a, at a later date, uh, Mayor Focaccia's issue in terms of changing or reviewing the zoning ordinance that gives the special use and giving the mayor's veto rights. Would you like to have that table, uh, and we bring that back at a later date?
I'd support that.
I have a question. And, uh, as far as, as far as veto is concerned, legally, what process do we go and just say, "Thank you for the nice conversation between the two of you," and move on?
Well, my opinion to the council is that it's not effective. So there really is no veto on the table. Now, obviously, the council could take a different opinion, and you could say, "No, we think he does have a veto, we don't agree with you, attorney." And you could vote to override, not, I mean, that's all I could do is give you my opinion on what is the effect of the mayor's veto.
But I think there's, it has to be some kind of closure, so that all these people in here know that we just didn't send her.
Well, then, then.
Listen to the two of you talk, and then, okay, next, next item.
So either the council would be saying that they are concurring with my assessment of the case, and that the, the veto was ineffective, and therefore they're not taking any further action.
Okay, all right. And I think that's probably a statement that should come from the president, that, uh, that we either concur with the, with the interpretation of the.
Well, I think we, that can be a consensus, whether each council person agrees with the mayor's position, and we can move from there. Um, but again, I would like for us to, um, look at reviewing the zoning ordinance as it relates to.
Yeah, I thought we said, yeah, that. Well, you're talking about consensus about veto.
Let me, let me finish the first item. So, going around the table, who's in favor of reviewing the zoning ordinance at a later date as it relates to, uh, the special use and the authority given by the mayor to veto special lands?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so we'll put that on the calendar at a later date, and I think that's a good one. Now, the second issue as it relates to the mayor's veto, who is interested in having a.
Well, I guess the question is, is there consensus to accept the attorney's interpretation that the veto is ineffective, or does the council wanna take a different action in response to the veto? Well, that's amend the ordinance to the future. Now we're talking about what's the effect of the mayor's veto tonight.
Okay, so let's get a consensus that this time. Okay, so let's get a consensus at this time to accept the attorney's opinion? Yes or no? Will it be more, no? Mr. Cruz, yes? Mr. Seizer, yes?
No, it's not a party of a, I was not even here that night, but I agree with the, with the attorney. That's what we're here for.
And I say yes as well, but I do want us to review the ordinance as it is later, because we do, don't want, um, intrusion in the neighborhood without giving the checks and balance.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, if I get elected to council, then you'll never get that provision in it.
That's what we were gonna say.
All right, this is, uh, we gotta recognize the land on this item, because we do have a little public hearing.
Thank you very much for some time. My name is Lynn Rice. I live on Berg Road and have since nineteen eighty-seven. Southfield Council, Councilmen, we need you. We need you to open your minds and hearts and hear the people of Southfield as your decisions affect us all. We need you to follow your oath of office that we elected you to, that says that the council shall provide for public peace, health, and safety of persons and property. We need you, what else and who else do we have to advocate for single-family homeowners and our property? Our little sanctuary. We need you because we do not have large financial resources or congregations of over two thousand five hundred influence. What speaks to you, our council? Be it money, votes, or assurances, or common people? We need you not only to look at our humble, countrylike neighborhood, but at the bigger picture. All Southfield neighborhoods, look at all of them when you make decisions that impact and approach residents. There are precedents here. We need you to utilize the resources you have and make sound decisions based on the city ordinances. We need you as a full council to listen to the mayor and his points. We need you to reconsider the March twenty-third vote and do the right thing. Maybe the right thing is to encourage a relook at with the new proposal on the table.
Okay, we will move to the next item, uh, the special authorization to the Southfield Union.
Madam President, the, uh, this item will appear at the next, uh, regular council meeting in the year. And, uh, we'll be asking council for authorization to proceed with the grants and subject to it. I've asked Ms. Freeman and Ms. Bagley to make a brief presentation while they're setting up the PowerPoint. I just wanna highlight this, there's been a lot of discussion about our career center the last month. In the fiscal year ending six, uh, thirty thirteen, uh, we had budgeted three point three million, and in the last, uh, in the fiscal year ending June thirty of fourteen, we actually had one million, just under one point eight million come in. And I bring that in, is we've actually seen these dollars shrink as the state's unemployment situation has improved. These are federal dollars that go to the state, and then to the state's agent, the county. And I thought this was an opportunity for the program to come in, uh, for Ily to come in and present the three programs, and a lot of things that we do that we're not receiving funding for, but because we have the staff that this funding provides. Uh, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bagley at this point.
Good evening, Councilman, Madam Chair. My pleasure, Ms. Bagley. I'm sorry, I'm gonna turn the microphone over. I'm not sure if the letter explains everything about the programs in the past yet. So we decided to put on a little, um, presentation that explains our Michigan Works Agency of the U.S. So, can I sit here? Okay. This will tell you who we are. We are a, um, Oakland County Career Center, one-stop agency that operates all the employment and training programs. Oh, can't hear me? Oh, sorry. Okay. Southfield Michigan Works is one of the eight locations in Oakland County, and it provides free workshops, workforce services to businesses and talents, and talents of the job seekers. We offer talent attraction, management, and retention services for businesses and career management, training and placement for job seekers. There's eight of us, and this is just kind of a, a show of where the eight of us are. And if you notice, we're down here on the bottom, Southfield, and we usually go all the way over to Southland, so our area is quite large. How we're funded, it's a federal-funded program, and it's funded through the Workforce Development Agency, through the state of Michigan, through Oakland County's Workforce Development Division, through the Workforce Development Board of Oakland County, and then, of course, sponsored by the City of Southfield in cooperation with the Southfield Police. Oakland County Workforce Development Division administers state and federally funded workforce programs and services by behalf of Oakland County Executive Officer Patterson and the Oakland County Workforce Development Board. Here's some of our programs. The first one is the Workforce Investment Act. It provides workforce investment activities for youth and adults to increase employment, retention, and earnings for participants, and it increases the occupation of skill attainment by, by participants, which will improve the quality of the workforce, reduce welfare dependencies, and enhance productivity and competitiveness of the economy. Our funding levels for the last three years, as you notice, twelve, we had one point three, almost one point four, and thirteen, we had one point two. This year, we're only up to eight oh eight, with the possibility of more funding, because the year isn't over yet, and there's still NEG funding out there, which is National Emergency Brands and other possible monies out there. The highlights include a continually met or exceeded performance measurement, with the scores of ninety percent or higher, all while doing more stepwise. We saved the city over two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in labor costs by providing youth and adults work experience participants in the past three years. This is another program called PATH. It stands for Partnership, Accountability, Training, and Hope. It's designed to enhance the employability of all our talent recipients and enable them to become more competitive in the labor market. The program features an assessment period during which the barriers to employment are identified. Case workers work with clients to address these areas so that participants can obtain employment and move off welfare. Our funding levels for the last three years, again, as you notice, on twelve, we had three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, thirteen, we have three hundred and eight, and in fourteen, four hundred and fifty. Now, the interesting thing about the funding level here, you notice, uh, we have a period where people, the caseworkers are finding the barriers, finding out the barriers to the clients. What's happened with the Department of Human Services is they changed how they do business. So now, they don't enroll people, they send them off first. So we have, um, the numbers are amazing. We served seven hundred and twenty-two people in twen- uh, twenty-fourteen, but we only got enrolled two hundred and fifty-four. What happens is they come into the program, not enrolled by the Department of Human Services, just so they can see if we can find a barrier, if they're gonna continue to work. So we're serving these people, and serving them, and serving them, but DHS doesn't enroll all of the people. So it's been an interesting mix this year. It happened last year and a half with PATH. The highlights include placement percentage is among the highest in Oakland County. We place over seventy-five percent of our PATH participants, and seventy-five percent of them are Southfield residents. We consistently rank in the top three programs in Oakland County, with clients earning the highest average salaries over, after ninety days and after a hundred and eighty days on the job. Two years ago, we were the highest in our salaries, and we were the highest for like four years in a row. And then somebody beat us last year, if I remember. Back to town.
I have just one quick question for my understanding, from you saying that seven hundred and twenty-two people come into this particular program.
Right.
But only two hundred and twenty-five were educated or.
Were enrolled, and were actually put into the PATH program. Because they are mandated to come up, so we can't make any of these people enroll. They have to come to us. Yes. The next program is our Wagner-Piser. This is the Employment Service Program. It features basic labor exchange services to unemployed clients, job seekers, and businesses. For the last three years of funding, as you notice, there's a strange difference here. Twelve, we had turned to fifty-nine thousand, thirteen, we have six hundred and eighty-five thousand, and fourteen, four hundred and thirty-three. In thirteen, we had major extensions with unemployment. And we had tons of people coming back and coming back, and then the extensions went away. Oh, so did the money. The highlights included, on average, we provide jobs, oops, we provide job search assistance to over nine hundred job applicants a month.
And how many of us, I'm sorry, how many of those receive jobs? Of the nine hundred that come in, what's the percentage?
I, well, two answers to that. One answer is, we're, we can't tell how many people get jobs, they're just coming into the center to look for jobs. So we have about a hundred people a day coming in. Some of them are just coming in and doing their own job search. But some of them like us a lot, and they will tell us when they get jobs. And I would say, what, about eighty percent?
Over the last two years, it's been about twelve hundred, um, twelve hundred, or so, um, that have received employment. So.
So, um, it, it's interesting, because we really can't mandate those people to give us information. So we have to glean it as best we can. So we work very friendly, very polite, we give them all they can take home, and that's us. So as many as we can find out, we do. Now, this is above and beyond our funding sources. First box tells you how we deliver employability school workshops to almost five hundred Southfield high school students. What we do is, and we've been doing this for years, we've gone with ten within the school, Mr. Seizer was in schools, um, we have a liaison that goes into school and works with the students. We don't ask for their eligibility or anything like that. We help every student. In the past year and a half, we've been going in and doing workshops with these students, and it's, you'd be amazed, I mean, with, um, the way that internet and everything works now, we had a Snaga job, uh, presentation put on by our, um, our liaison, and she did an excellent job showing these kids how to go onto the internet, enter this particular site, answer the questions correctly, and she got letters from these kids saying, I got an interview, I got a job. So it's amazing what the kids, well, you know, especially when you're doing, um, media stuff. Second one is we represent and participate in various organizations, including our nationality, the chamber, advisory councils in the high school, the Oakland County. Yes, diversity council, among others. We provide workshops, uh, workforce talent support to area businesses, and this is our business service professional, um, service, where we average about forty employers a month, where our, uh, staff members actually go out to employers in Southfield, in the local areas of Farmington, and actually spoke to them to fact-finding, see how they can keep their businesses going, get them better, help them find employees. So that's a great program, and we don't get paid for that one either. Facilitate job search, ask the expert, ask the expert workshops for Southfield, Farmington, Farmington House Libraries, patrons. We go in the library, we set up a little section in the back, and people can just come up and ask the experts, how do you write a resume, how do you interview? We partner with JBS for speed networking and job fairs to assist Southfield and the surrounding community residents with job search assistance. And as a matter of fact, we have job fairs right on our site. I would say, we have employers that come in and just interview people right on our site and hire them, and that way. And we deliver outplacement services to businesses that are experiencing layoffs. It's also known as a rapid response from the state, but we will do it for any company, whether they are laying off twenty-five people, five hundred people, or two people, to go in and help their, uh, businesses. And I jotted down a few more things that I did think of when I did the slides. But we've been recognized, um, by the state in the stated model of our access database, which is throughout the state. We also have partnered with local businesses in Southfield to give a discount rate when we buy insurance for our cast people, whether we help them with car repair, uh, getting gas cars or clothing. We work by presenting with faith-based organizations. And in our local community, we have a John Gray Senior, uh, group that come and they meet every Tuesday. We also do a yearly barbecue with the seniors to keep them engaged in the community. And we also have a vet rep on our, in our building, and we give him space, and we buy him a telephone, uh, comput- now, he has his own computer, but the desk and all the other information that he might need to help the veterans in the area. And I believe that, yeah.
Hi, any questions, Councilor? Um, Mr. Cruz.
Uh, what percentage of people that walk through your door are Southfield residents?
We took, um, a calculation of that, and it's over fifty percent. Depending on the program, it's higher than low.
Uh, looks like you're doing a lot of good work down there, and yet, our unemployment rate is still the highest in Oakland County. Can you help me?
Well, we have a high population of single-headed councils, female people in nine local areas, for example. Lots and lots of people unemployed. There's seven hundred and twenty-two people in the PATH program, and they're all unemployed. So it's very hard getting people on welfare to move up into jobs. But we're working on it. We have two hundred and fifty-three of them employed.
Okay, the other question that I have is that, uh, you said the Department of Human Services doesn't enroll anymore, they send them to you. Uh, now, are you talking about, are human services people over at the Berg Center, or are you talking about Oakland County?
This is what used to be called, um, FIA, THX, is the State Welfare Program. So anyone who applies for welfare has to go through a process. And they used to just enroll them and give them cash money, give them boot stamps, and put them on a program, but, and then send them to us, for us to help them find jobs. Well, now, they've decided is they don't wanna go through all of that process until they're sure if these people are gonna get jobs, or at least be actively involved. So they send them to us first for three weeks, and let us assess them. And then, after the three weeks, if the people are doing what they're supposed to be doing, then the Department of Human Services will then enroll them, give them cash assistance and give them cash.
Okay, two more questions. First question is, do you get any referrals from our human services people of, that come to them for assistance that?
Oh, definitely. And we, we refer to the House of Lords, to the House.
Okay, and the, and the last question that I have at this point in the hour is, if there were no barriers, what would you need to do your job better?
If there were no barriers?
Yeah, if you, you know, if you, if the, the wish fairy came on and said, you can have your wishes, what do you need that's reasonable for, you know, for the City of Southfield to do, say, help you do your job better so that you can reduce the unemployment?
Well, um, having more funding would be nice, but that's not reasonable. We don't have any money right now, city or county or state. Anything, anything that we could use?
I think employers to, um, look at individuals who've been unemployed for a longer period of time.
Can you come up to the.
Sure.
Sorry. And tell us your position.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Strasby. I'm the assistant manager there at the Southfield.
I'm the assistant manager there at the Southfield Leadership Center. I think that the unemployed population, after a certain period of time, they're not looked on as favorably as someone who's been laid off for a week or two. I think employers see that as something negative about a job seeker. So the longer you're unemployed, the longer it takes you to become employed. And that doesn't look favorably upon that individual. I think the employers and the businesses out there are a little unrealistic also about what they're going to get for what they're going to pay. So you have an employer who just recently comes in and doesn't understand why he can't get qualified individuals. And it's eight fifteen an hour that he's willing to pay individuals who need to support a family. "I just want someone in the neighborhood to come and, you know, work at my place." Well, you have to look at what you're paying. Are you paying a reasonable wage for what you're asking for? Where are the benefits? Well, there are no benefits. So those are the kinds of things, and so we have to look at, are you also looking at, you know, where could you start them off, maybe a little bit of higher rate of pay? So I think that that's one of the concerns. Looking, helping businesses to see what's realistic, helping them to not have as much turnover and that kind of thing. So.
Okay.
Have we ever had a workshop for an employer in terms of fully understanding the person who may have been out of work for months?
Sure. And there's lots of workshops being offered, like the Automation Alley and that kind of thing, to help employers and discuss the skills gap and how to address those kinds of issues that, you know, the businesses are having right now.
I wanted to comment, because I'm going to take Council back to the action we took with LTU and the Business Acceleration Center, and then even doing the study. One of the objectives, as we look at the Smart Zone and this reconfiguration, is somehow out of these increment authorities to figure out how we can get another bucket of money into this program for some flexibility. All of the money they receive is for, all of the money they bring in is for very defined activities. So it'd be great to give them a flexible amount of money. We're not in a position to make a general fund allocation. But as we go through and take a look at our TIPS and those authorities, the concept becomes workforce, this agent becomes an agent of those authorities. And there's, you know, for sake of a lack of a better word, some gleaning of funds that would come in. What you approved, I think we took the action in March with the Smart Zone, but with looking at the Business Incubation Center, is I'd like to see them in a more state-of-the-art building. You know, something that gives them, you know, a more prominent location, a better location relative to its interaction with the business community, and good amenities. They've got good IT, they've got communication that works. But the building they're in is tired and there's some issues. And I want to point out, I received notice this week from the county, you know, what would really be neat is, and I'll throw this out, the city of Oklahoma receives just under two million dollars a year in community development block grant. We're a larger city, and we're receiving four hundred and twenty-five thousand. And it's because the metrics that HUD is using is based on an older model, going back to the seventies and the eighties. This year, HUD changed the metrics on the home dollars. And you recall, this council approved a hundred and forty thousand, which previously went to the state, going to Oakland County. Neighborhood Services Committee just saw a presentation where that money is being spent for housing we have in Southfield. Well, that allocation for next year is a hundred and ninety-three thousand because HUD changed the metrics. And if Ms. Pedler was here, she would tell you, she's involved in a state association that's looking at changing those metrics. What would be neat is if somehow out of our HUD money, where we can only put fifteen percent in a public service, we'd be able to say, "Here's another block of money." Well, I can tell you, I spoke to our Congresswoman and her staff about this. This is on there. Part of the metrics is also our housing. You know, we have added, we, in the last, if you look at the census, we have a larger percentage of our residents in poverty. Part of it is tied to our housing stock, the sheer volume of rental, lots of other factors. So forcing those types of things, when this council works with, you know, legal cities, getting HUD to make that one change would be a shift in revenue. But my goal would be, you know, what we're doing with the Smart Zone, we're going to be putting the old TIPS and LDFAs under the microscope. They've not been fully closed out. If there's any way to keep those entities active, I would come back and glean a back, and we'd enter into a contract with our workforce agency to provide services to our businesses. And they're doing that with the realign, and they have been doing it all along, but that was part of this realignment. In the next few months, I want to spend a little bit more time with Human Services to figure out how we close this gap. Because as I've said, you know, what was not in our control in the bond rating was the unemployment rate. We got koodles for where we were at in financial performance, but it was those items that weren't outside of our control that cost us a triple A, and we've got a double A, which is still outstanding. But can we do something to close that gap? And it would be neat one day, Eileen mentioned, we do support Automation Alley. What we're doing with LTU, we're now putting more money in. But maybe one of our future subcontractors with the Smart Zone is our own workforce agency. And that's a stage we're trying to set. You know, even fifty, seventy-five thousand could give them more flexibility. And I see this list of what they've done by just kind of managing what money they get and really working their staff a little bit harder. I'm really impressed. So, more money, facility.
How many people are on your staff? Because you're doing an awful lot of work. If you're talking about many?
We have eighteen.
Eighteen people, full time?
Um, I think there's fifteen, fifteen full time.
My other question is, how is the center promoted? I know the city puts out things, just think on the website, but are you doing anything on your own? Maybe share that.
Well, Oakland County has social media, social media presence, so we are definitely on social media. More and more is done that way. There's Twitter, there's Facebook. So we are on all of those things. We promote all of the jobs that are brought in, so we're doing that as well. So I think that's the primary way, that's through social media. But I mean, we're present, we belong to all of the different organizations that we discuss, so I think that's also part of the marketing team that we do as well.
Can I also add one other thing, that with the reorganization of Cable, they are meeting with Mike Kelly, and he will be videoing their presentations and taking all of the things that they have been doing in the schools and putting that on Cable. And we'll be putting those presentations online as well, so we can get them out, because a lot of the services that have been offered to smaller groups of people are applicable to the entire population. And we want to share that as well, so we're moving that forward.
I just don't know, and I could be wrong, but if people who are struggling, unemployed, are really going to be able to access all the social media?
Well, one of the things they do, Mr. Pizer, is if they're filing for unemployment, they have to come, they have to come to us. If you file for unemployment, you must go to a Michigan Works agency and place your resume there. So we see every unemployed person from a janitor all the way up to a CEO.
Okay. And I just, I just don't have a great sense that, you know, I've known you for years, Negoria Kennedy, you know, the whole continuum of, and this is not a criticism, like everybody around the table, I think I can speak for, we'd like to see our unemployment numbers drop. So I'm just wondering if there's some other way that, you know, with the cities, because it's all in our best interest of promoting the resources that you have. I certainly know the great success that you had in Southfield schools. I thought over and over again, how many kids got a start to the success? But I'm just thinking about those average adult citizens that...
Well, when you consider, we have a hundred people a day that come through, that's a lot of people, which just comes through on one center.
Yeah. But again, as you say, fifty percent of them are not Southfield folks.
Right. But we have employers that come through. We have, I forgot how many employers we have now coming through. But employers just walk into the center, customers come in, and it's amazing when people come in, they're unemployed, and they say, "I've never, I didn't know you existed." And that's just the most, if you need a tire, you could be passing belt tire every day of the week, but so you need a tire, you don't really care.
At least I can't agree with you more. I've seen this over and over again, with what you're willing to pay and what you're going to get for that money.
Yes, unbelievable.
Well, we're doing more outreach in terms of just to general public. We have a one-on-one assistance program that we're offering, where we sit down with individuals and do kind of that ask the expert, but work with them more continuously so that they can find the types of jobs that are paid more, and just see if there are opportunities out there for different training programs that are funded through other grants and that kind of thing. We may not have somebody else, I guess.
Yes, I do.
Well, I wanted to comment. I asked if this presentation would be made to obviously increase understanding, but to recognize that we are a county that has an unemployment rate lower. And in the SEMCOG Service Delivery Area, you've got six, seven workforce agencies all receiving funding. And when you go through a statistical analysis, the county is getting a block of money for the eight areas. And that was one of the statements that I made up in the last month, is trying to force a different analytical analysis for Southfield to drive that. And it's a tough uphill battle, because, one, it's a state-federal program operated by the county. And now we need to kind of, you know, pound a little bit harder and say, "You know what? We need more resources for this community." And in Wayne County, where you have two workforce agencies, am I correct? Detroit, and then the one for Down River and Western Wayne, you know, where the unemployment rates are a little higher, and we're competing against that same bucket of money. Our strength is the employment base we have. The challenge is the steel set and some of those folks who haven't found long enough to find employment. I think it was this that earlier, the longer someone's been unemployed, the tougher, people are blackballed. There's a bias. You know, if you can't find a job, there must be something wrong with you. And for anyone who got caught up in the crash in a lake, it was even worse.
We've been doing workshops to help the long-term unemployed. We've been doing workshops for talent enhancement. So right now, I think next week, we have Money Smart, or Smart Money, a home workshop to help people with their budget and retirement funds and different types of information. And it's done by the also, the Federal Reserve is coming in to do that for us.
For folks attending college, are you paying tuition for these, for students that are Michigan Works? Is that part of what you're doing here? And are they also giving a stipend, or are they also paying for teen class? I don't understand. I got a lot of students, Michigan Works students, I have to sign in the form. I was curious as to what...
There is some funding for training. They consider training as the individual training accounts that fund some of that. Money has been much tighter, so it's, when there was No Worker Left Behind, there was a lot of money available for training, and now it's kind of decreased up a lot. So, yes, we do do some training. Yes, we do still help individuals, but it's at a much lower.
We were doing very well during that.
And I think the stipend and the fees have become from the pump rate.
That's where Oakland, so that's, I'll take that.
Do you have a question? This will be placed on our agenda for April twenty-fourth. I think it's very necessary. The next item on our agenda is that the closed retail development in Southfield.
This particular item is SP thirteen twenty-six. This is a site plan review request of Najah Gasso of Arizona Investments LLC. The proposal is to construct seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four gross square feet of retail development, two buildings on properties located two zero five seven zero and two zero six one zero west eight mile, north side of the eight mile road between Evergreen Road and Lotsar. With regard to this particular item, the area that's circled in red on the bottom plan here, the aerial photo, is the location of the proposed site. This is just west of the shopping center that Mr. Gasso owns. That shopping center is called Baseline, has our party store in it, as well as a number of other retail establishments. Directly to the east of this particular property is also an auto parts store. Council did approve that a couple of years ago. That was a demo of what was done blue at one time, and now has become an auto parts store. So what Mr. Gasso is looking to do, again, he's purchased this property once operated by Pegasus Lighting. His intent is to demolish at least three quarters of the buildings on that property. It'd be all the buildings from the eastern property line to the west. Now, the building right there actually is going to remain, so he can actually keep that building up. The other buildings then would be demoed as part of his proposal. It's B three general business, the property, as are the properties to the east and to the west. His proposal, again, for seventy-eight hundred square feet of retail space, he would construct a thirty-nine hundred square foot retail building on the east side of the property, and again, maintain the existing building on the west side and convert that over to retail as well. Parking spaces would then be in the middle, sandwiched between the two buildings. Total parking required for the project is forty-two spaces. His plan shows thirty-four spaces on it. However, within the zoning ordinance, we do allow parking within three hundred feet of the property to serve the needs of this particular facility. You'll see that we actually have a city parking lot that is about one property just to the west of where Mr. Gasso's project would be. And he can actually, there's twenty-nine parking spaces within that parking lot, so he can actually supply all of his needs from a parking standpoint to include the parking spaces on that particular lot as well. The proposal does show buildings that are completely made of brick, as well as glass, and do have a ethos across the tops of them. There are a number of waivers that would be needed for this. If you look at the properties themselves, they are fairly narrow, all along this particular edge, along the twenty-foot alley that is across the northern portion of these properties. So he would be looking at waivers for front yard setback for the eastern building, eastern most building. He'd also be looking at rear yard setback waivers for the west side, or for the north side of both, of both the new buildings, as well as some landscape waivers. And again, a lot of that has to do with just the narrowness of the lot. Keep in mind that with the twenty-foot alley there, actually, in essence, we can meet the setback requirements, because that alley, again, does serve, it's public right-of-way, kind of serves as additional setback for the residential to the north. The easternmost building would be set back similar to what the existing auto parts store is, so there'd be no further encroachment. And you can see by the aerial that we do, or the elevations that we do have, it does show what the current look of the building is. The majority of those buildings are already close to eight mile roads. We're getting rid of the blight that's there. We are moving buildings back, as well as getting considerable amount of landscaping. There's basically no landscaping on these properties at all. Pretty much all concrete and driveways. So we actually will be getting rid of probably seventy-five percent of the concrete along the front issue and replacing that with the landscaping. Mr. Gasso is here, so I'm going to invite him to come up and give additional comments regarding this project.
Are you giving us your, I think, your name and your business address for the record?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. My name is Najah Gasso from Arizona Investment. My address, two oh three two zero west eight mile road. We've been in the city of Southfield for a long time, since eighty-three, eighty-four. We sold the liquor store, and then we expanded to purchase many parcels just west of Evergreen, and we constructed the thirty-one thousand square foot plaza. And about ten years later, fifteen years later, we constructed the advanced auto parts, so now we're going... So now we're going more west of the project.
And I'm Chester Stumpian, architect for the project. The design is in keeping with what we had previously done, which is an auto parts store that we were granted permission to build close to Eight Mile Road despite the fact that there's a certain setback requirement. So we're adding to a non-conforming use, but it's blending in with what is already there. And to keep the design from baseline plaza across to that carpet store, we've created a screening system, which is wrought iron fencing with brick piers very so often. We've placed as much as we can in landscaping to whatever space we had available. The existing building is such that we could use again, so we're enhancing that. That has a tougher setback. So we've gone through the zoning appeal process. There's parking available for what we're doing. And I believe it'll blend in with what's already there.
You don't feel, are there any questions?
When I saw this on the packet Friday, I was very intrigued. Regularly drive by here, the strip, the art party store strip, looks good. The laundromat on one end and so on, and the, I think it's Murray's. But anyhow, so this has always been an eyesore. So coming, hearing that somebody wanted to do something, I'm really thrilled. I had a question, is this the building that you're not tearing down?
Yes, that is correct.
I don't know if everybody can see this, but it's, so this will get a new facade?
Exactly, this is it, this is it right here.
Yeah, right.
So imagine a new construction.
That's what I assume. All right, and we talked before about the wall in the back. There's, I think it's West Haven Street and behind. You put a gate in for the neighborhood, do you remember?
Yes.
And security lighting in the back because the neighbors were concerned. I'm sure that that might come up again. So will there be, there is a masonry wall there. I'm not sure how far down it goes. That goes all the way to the, I was gonna, the, uh...
Sister, can you just step aside for a second? You can see actually the shadow for the masonry wall. You can see on the northern part of the alley itself. So it does go the entire extent from Evergreen Road and does go west.
Okay. And it's, I think, I believe it's an eight-foot wall, it's sizable.
I believe it is eight-foot.
And you're not planning to add any gate to that?
No, no, that's, um...
And I noticed on your buildings you have outside cameras.
Yes.
And you'll have those on this, I assume?
Yes, that is correct, right.
Okay. Those are my questions for now, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Page?
Yes, the city parking lot. What's the condition of that parking lot?
It is in fair condition, but it could use a lot of work, especially with new landscaping on it.
If it's the same one that I've seen, it really needs a lot of work.
It needs work.
It needs to be resurfaced. Also, when I was there, if it had stripes, you couldn't tell because it was a combination asphalt, gravel, and holes. So if we're using that as part of the parking requirements for this thing, I think maybe we better do something if it's our parking lot.
Through the chair, we did discuss in the next phase under the brownfield about possibly having some of the money allocated to clean up the frontage of the parking lot, continue the ornamental screening and to resurface the parking lot. So we did talk with the city administration, with the council president about we need to do our job, but we might be able to leverage some of the funding in the brownfield to have that happen. And we could have economies of scale when this fence and brick piers get installed and other landscaping. We could maybe have the same contractor do city work, see how that works.
Okay, and the second question about parking is, I know three, four, or five weeks ago, you were talking about reevaluating our parking requirements.
And that's scheduled for April twenty-seventh.
Are the parking requirements that you dictated for this project based on the new study or what we have on the books now?
We have to base it on what's on the books now because we can't presume that the council's going to make the amendments. The new standards would relax in this particular case, the need for additional parking. But we have to follow what's on the books at this time since the African has submitted under these standards.
Okay, the question I was going to ask is, if you could use the, your current recommendation, future recommendation, would they need to use the city parking?
Probably fewer spaces. I wanted to point out that they lost two spaces based on a recommendation from our fire department about turning radius. They do get a credit for bike parking, I don't know if that was figured in. So they still may need a couple spaces, but not the six.
That's all the questions I have about parking. I do have a question about recovery of the brownfield. One of the things says there's the actual work that's being done plus a fifteen percent contingency. And that's part of the recapture, is the contingency. But they can't capture it if they don't use it.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's part of the cost fair protection on any ground floor plan is one of the things. It asks you know to activity on to verify the actual cost.
Okay, because I see it in the formula of recaptured money.
Well, for purposes of planning, there is a contingency.
I understand that. But that's just, you know, for windage. And if you don't need it, then, okay, all right.
And we will have a whole presentation on the brownfield discussion.
More than you're earning on this book?
Well, we're going to go over it. Jessica Tiere to go over in detail. Any other questions?
That's it.
I have to say, this is the work of development throughout the area of the city, the whole facework. So thank you for your development.
Thank you, we're glad to be in Southfield as well. Our main office is in Southfield. We have, we've got another property to the west of that, it looks very nice. The city officials are very happy with it.
Okay, well, now can you give us any potential retail operations? Do you know at this time who will be taking the, are you free to share them?
Oh, sure, it is, for the new development, correct? Any tenants, any tenant names? Yeah, we're looking like maybe a shoe store. Some of those people were lost from the north side, so we've got a lot of marketing. So we're going to try to hide the fear of those people. They're very comfortable with the land, come on those, so.
Great, welcome development to that area.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the brownfield.
If I may, just through the chair just for a second. Staff has asked if it would be placed on your April twenty-seventh meeting. It will be coming before you in a couple of weeks for final recommendation of the council at your regular meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Hi, many of you I hope remember me, Neil Silver from Tenth Silver, yeah, New York Council for the Brownfield. She's going to give you, she gave you a big book and she's going to go through it. I've got a one-page summary.
I already like you better.
So, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, we were very excited to receive a request from Arizona Investment. The Brownfield redevelopment authority did approve this plan at their April first board meeting. And our goal is to bring this, to have this project run concurrently with the planning process so that, so able to start the process all at one time. Again, Jessica Gagon is here for PM Environment, and she's going to give a presentation on their request. So here's just a little bit of background on Najah, the Arizona Investment. They have been in Southfield since, I think you said, eighty-three, eighty-four. Founded, I was going to say, in Southfield. But, so he is located in Southfield and committed to improving Southfield, especially along Eight Mile where he has already made some investment in the community. So the property we're looking at, the former Pegasus Building. Just give you some details on the building itself. It's about eighteen thousand square feet total, sitting on just over half an acre. It was originally constructed in nineteen forty-five and there have been several additions like this. The existing taxable value on the property is one hundred fifteen thousand, one seventy. And it has been vacant since twenty twenty. So here's just a blown-up aerial of, you know, kind of what you already saw. The building that's remaining is this portion right here. Here's some exterior photos for you. Can tell it's lighted, needs improvement quite a bit. And just to give you an idea in the street level, this is the portion that will remain. We'll have new updated windows, facade. And then this will turn into green space landscaping along Eight Mile. And the rest of this will all be demolished. The property was determined to be functionally obsolete, thus making it eligible for the Brownfield funding. The result was due to the obsolete building materials and the asbestos that was found in the building, lack of off-street parking with the existing layout, the mixed-use nature of the improvements compared to the nature of the existing buildings. So the proposed development is to maintain this existing building as we've already discussed with new landscaping improvements, curb gutter, sidewalk improvements, and some of the facade and interiors. There's some pictures for you of what the building currently looks like. You can see it's pretty much an empty shell with lots of debris, so it does need quite a bit of work. And then the demolition of the remaining fourteen thousand or so square feet to construct the new thirty-seven hundred square foot building. And then that will be split with the parking in the middle. Overall, we're looking at around one point five million investment for the project. Here are some interior pictures of that portion. So the Brownfields are classed, we're looking at one hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven. That is actually a couple hundred thousand more than the eligible expense total for the project. So it's below the total amount that they could potentially ask for. And that involves the environmental assessment, demolition, the asbestos survey and abatement, infrastructure improvements, site preparation activities, so excavation of unstable materials, staking grading on the property, and then preparation of the Brownfield plan. There is just over what's estimated to be twenty-six thousand to contribute to the local site remediation revolving sites through the city. And we're estimating a twenty-five year reimmersion period. And taxes will continue to be collected by the city on the current taxable value. There's just about fore and aft of shop for you. So some of the benefits that we're looking at, practically twenty new full and part-time jobs located with the retail, contributing to improving a distressed area. Hopefully, increasing commercial and retail spending in the area and acting as a catalyst for future development along Eight Mile. There will be no loss of tax revenue on the property and new and increased tax captures anticipated to be over a hundred and twenty thousand throughout the duration of a plan on the small taxes and the non-c taxable taxes. And then we just have a couple success stories. Here's the advanced auto parts that's enjoying the property that we're here to discuss today. Before and after for you. And another property down Eight Mile as well. Again, our attorney, who is representing the Brownfield Authority, Neil Silver, has cast out a handout that provides a summary.
Any questions, Council?
Yeah. You said that there will be no loss in, or you continue to pay taxes on the current assessment?
Correct.
But if you tear a building down, does it get reassessed?
No. Its taxable value in the Brownfield plan, the base taxable value is set to what it is today. As if nothing had been done to the property.
Okay, so regardless of the fact that you're tearing the building down, and let's assume that the work is going to start, if you get approval, the work's going to start yet this year, but it goes over into next construction season, that it won't change the...
I can answer that. Okay. The base year is set at the date that city council approves the Brownfield plan. So the base year would be now, assuming it gets passed at the next council.
And then our city assessor will come out and assess the property and that's how the plan, the increment or capture, they come in.
Okay, now you say there's, I'm not going to put your feet in the fire for this, but twenty full and part-time jobs will end up with, you know, you'll end up with twenty full or part-time jobs.
Oh, that's, um...
Well, whoever's going to answer the question. A lot of times we have people that come in that are developers and they're, they tell us that they're going to have a certain number of full-time jobs, full and part-time jobs. Well, they don't split it up for us. So we're standing here with, you know, with positive thoughts. Oh, good, there're going to be eighteen full-time jobs and two part-time jobs. It turns out two full-time jobs and eighteen part-time jobs. Do you have any, any kind of a feel for how that's going to be?
To be honest with you, because it just depends on which tenant would come in, just from the experience owning shopping centers. My guess would be might even a little bit more. For example, that, almost four thousand square foot building would be to the east of that. It just depends which tenant would take it. Let's just pick, you know, for example, a food locker or something, or a restaurant down the road. I believe they'll have more like twelve in that four thousand square foot of a Coney Island or something like that. It just depends on which tenant. So we're looking at having five tenants, for example. Three are the small ones and one are the big ones.
Yeah, well, we were just talking earlier about the unemployment rate here in the city of Southfield and we're trying to do the best we can to reduce the unemployment and, you know, full-time jobs to help. Ray's family is much better than part-time jobs, so. Whatever you can do, you know, I'm, 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 sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council?
Just two, I hope, still, point for council. You will continue to collect the taxes that you are collecting today. There's no interest being paid on this Brownfield plan and the development agreement, there will be a base investment, a trigger point at the minimum amount of investment before the reimbursement starts.
Actually, if I may, we've kind of talked about this one being so small, really going to do it more like a reimbursement agreement and...
It'll be in the reimbursement, okay.
And the cap was really that they can, that we've talked about in the, I didn't even draft or even discuss. The concept was they must get a CFO for both buildings by December seventeen. I mean, just December two thousand seventeen, or that would be a trigger for no reimbursement. And they can use the funds within a category, financially, but not outside each category. Meaning if the total site prep dollars, for example, under the, under the VEA category, they have a total of ninety-seven two hundred dollars. They've got two items that make up that. They could use no more than ninety-seven fifty-five for that category. They couldn't, if there was, if they only... They couldn't, if there was, if they only did that for eight, they wouldn't be able to take that money and move it down to the site prep. And so we're going to cap the levels in there that way.
And that's part of it. We've capped these levels, there has, you know, before they could get paid back, they have to create the value.
Yeah, and they get paid, no, it's no interest, they only get paid out in increments, there's no increment, they don't get paid, they don't pay their taxes, they go to pay.
Well, it seems like the property definitely needs the criteria for Brownfield to be held.
Yeah, I would, the only thing, everybody kept using the term blighted, and just as a cautionary tale, the property can only be blighted if Council itself passes a resolution declaring it a blighted property. It is a functionally obsolete property.
Thank you, and this will be moved to our... Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Mark?
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. President, President, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, my name is Mark Anuzi. I'm the President of Telnet Worldwide, also the President of Cybernetics. Telnet is a parent corporation, Cybernetics is a division within Telnet Worldwide.
Madam President, Honorable Board, as many of you know, back in April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, the City Council approved a resolution to assist Telnet to open the new data center located off of Loser. At the time, we were, the owners had come before us and asked for the Public Act One Ninety-eight real and personal property abatement under, under the name of Cybernetics. At this time, they're asking to have that name transferred to Edge Connect, is that his name, Edge Connect? And Mark Anuzi is here representing Telnet, Cybernetics, and he's going to go through the scenario that has brought us to this phase at this time, so.
Thank you, good to see everybody again. So I'm a, just a little background again on myself, I was born and raised in Detroit, and I went to University of Michigan, and I'm an engineer, and I've been building technology businesses for over thirty years. I founded Telnet Worldwide in nineteen ninety-eight, and our mission in this highly technical world we live in is trying to simplify and unify all the ways that businesses connect, communicate, and collaborate. We especially focus on bringing big business solutions in the technology area to small to middle-sized companies at prices that they can afford. Two years ago, as Shelley had indicated, and I came before you to talk about a very ambitious project, a very exciting project, an incredible asset here, about creating a Tier Three enhanced data center here in Southfield. We had found a piece of property on Loser Road that was built in two thousand and two approximately and had sat idle, vacant, unused for over ten years. We acquired that property, and our goal was then to transform it into a functioning piece of property. Now, in terms of, who we are, so I want to just give you a little bit about why is this important to us for a moment, just to kind of refresh everybody. We live in a very exciting time in terms of the world we live in. We live in a, a time of a lot of change, so you need to, as an individual and as a company, you need to continually reinvent yourself. I look at it as exponential times, and I'm going through these points here, I'd like to tell you though that information is generated in the world that doubles, the amount of data in the world doubles every two years. Let's pull a point down here, six exabyte of data was, unique data was created in two thousand and twelve. Now, to give, put that in perspective, if you took that amount of data and put it into iPads, sixty-four gigabit iPad, you would need twenty-five billion iPads to store that amount of information, and that information is doubling every year. So what does this mean? That means for our knowledge-based economy, data centers are essential infrastructure for the knowledge economy. They are the factory floor of where the Internet lives, it's the factory floor of where this cloud that we keep on hearing a lot about lives. The fiber optic cables that we hear, we develop and we run through our communities are really the roads in business, roads and bridges to these, to get these information assets. Now, what's happening here for our business is to stay competitive and to be relevant is they need, for a business to afford this kind of technology that runs our economy, it is very expensive, especially for that small to middle-sized business. So what you see them doing is they have a model that's trying to shift their capital expenditures to operational expenditures for these types of assets, so they can use their capital X dollars, CapEx dollars, on things that are more strategic to what they do than supporting, the cost to support to build out a data center to support their infrastructure. And the other thing that we are trying to embrace here is to put these assets close to home. You want them close to home. You see very big data center activities, but they occur in markets like Chicago and things like that, where you'd have to go and take these properties and build them out. And our mission here is about creating them close to home. So our timeline that we went on here and our vision to develop our company is in two thousand and eleven, actually ten, two thousand and twelve, we're still in the throat of this, the Great Recession that was going on, but we needed to develop who we were going to be and where our roadmap was, and this is where we enshrined the idea about developing data center cloud enablement assets. In two thousand and twelve, as I indicated, we purchased the property on Loser Road, and in two thousand and thirteen through fourteen was really where the hard work was taking place. A lot of activity was coming together, we brought together investment partners, we brought together different engineers, designers, to try to look at how we can make this thing come to fruition. But like anything, the road to a worthwhile goal is never a straight line, there's a lot of twists and turns. And one of the most important things that took place during this period of time was getting the proper amount of energy from the utility company to this, to this property. Data centers consume a lot of energy. You do not invest this kind of money that it takes to put a piece of property like this unless you know you're going to have ample power. It took a lot of work and a lot of blood, sweat, and tears going on with Detroit Edison to figure out that they could deliver us the amount of power that we needed. What we were seeking was ten megawatts of power for this facility. To put that in perspective, ten megawatts of power is about six thousand average-sized homes of energy. Now, there's a lot of energy that's going into powering these computing devices, but I also want to point out to you that this is actually a lot of power, but it's a green facility. And me, what I mean by green facility is that every ounce of power that comes in, we're trying to make sure it's driving the engines of the computers that do the work, so we're doing, we're sort of using the power in a very efficient manner. We have some great technology about how we cool the facility, for example, that goes into these, this activity. But working with DTE, they couldn't get us the ten megawatts of power. Basically, I came back and I said, hey, we can, we can get you five without building a substation and doing some other things. But we were able to then figure out a strategy where we could take advantage of what they could do today, and then set the seeds for what they would be able to commit to tomorrow. Along this way here, one of our key investment, investors in our group was a company out of Virginia called Edge Connect. They develop data center properties around the country. They were very intrigued about what we had going on here in Southfield. We invited them in, they were part of our investment group. As we got through this process a little bit further into two thousand thirteen and fourteen, they stepped up and said, hey, we want to be a bigger player at the table, and that involves us...
And maybe we can just interject, because they came to City Council prior to Edge Connect purchasing the property. So the City Council granted their original request in two thousand and thirteen, and it set the foundation for the scenario that we're in right now. So when they, when they asked for the request, they were working with DTE, and things got delayed at that point, and it extended their construction process. And so that's why we're in the situation that we're entering now. So they're asking to have a longer window to install their project, so that they can take advantage of the tax abatement that we gave them.
Right, thank you, no, I appreciate it, and I guess people understand. Yeah, that, when we were here, as I mentioned, in the early two thousand and thirteen, we were ready to go, except we had a few more things to latch down, and it got delayed out, so we really didn't get started on the construction until the third quarter of last year. We had a grand opening last month, a number of folks here were able to attend, we had a nice visit, and we're looking forward to other people to come through, we're very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. And also, we got the second phase of construction, I got the drives, we go see the pilot, we're going to go see him, and we get the second phase rolling here before, actually before the month of May ends, hopefully. This is just some of the sequence. It goes from a dirt floor to putting down all these different things that just transformed this site. This is the timeline, and just a few snapshots, I know they're small, so, anyways, we end up with a Taj Mahal of data centers. So what this does here is it's what we call infrastructure as a service. Infrastructure creates for businesses and to provide them the power they need, we talked about, the cooling characteristics for that equipment, there's a great deal of certification process you go through to make sure that the data that's in these facilities is safe and secure. Connectivity, fiber optics that are coming through the city, we're taking advantage of those guys who build out those fiber lines, they now have another place where they can get to their customers. And the facility itself, we, like I said, we have a forty thousand square foot facility and looks like about that. The Edge Connect folks, I'll tell you a little bit about them, once again, they're out of Virginia. They are very well-backed in terms of assets, in terms of their capital structure, they're... So when you're building projects that have great ambitions, great futures, you want to make sure you have great capital banking. So what they do here is we've aligned it, where now they own the building, and that's their property. They have partnerships with key connectivity guys that we bring into the facility, already have Comcast, a number of these guys already in the building. Our job in this thing at Cybernetics Telnet is we enable the data center assets, where people can bring in their IT assets or use our IT assets for their business customers, and we operate the facility itself. Okay, so in terms of where we were when we first spoke, in terms of where we are today in terms of some of the adjustments, the initial real investment is targeted at sixteen million dollars. We're on target, we're at sixteen million dollars is where the new forecast is coming in at. The personal property was estimated at twenty-one million dollars back in thirteen, we're coming in at twelve million dollars, about eight million dollars less than we forecast. The reason for this is this, the amount of time to build out that next phase of DTE's power plant for the facility. It'll take a lot of money to make that happen, so we're using the five megawatts that we have now, but outside of the investment window for the abatement, this will occur, because you need that energy. The power of these computers keeps on changing, and we need to make that happen. So there's a time shift that's just going on here, just outside of the window for this support. The other thing I wanted to note about personal property is that inside these data centers, you have racks and racks of cabinets, and inside of each one, they're like, they're like a locker, and inside there you put all these compute servers. The facility has capacity to hold seven hundred of these cabinets, and the average price of the, of the assets that would go in there from our tenants, we estimate about thirty-five million dollars. Actually, it's probably more than that, because it's about a hundred thousand dollars per cabinet, so three, three hundred and fifty cabinets is what this was estimated at. So it doesn't include capital investment of other people, of our tenants. The other first thing here is about jobs. We were talking about jobs here earlier, and they're very important. I tell you, since this project started, and when I was here two years ago, my company, we've added thirty new jobs to our company, ten of which are directly related to this project. Also, like the fly, there's just a sidebar item, but I couldn't help but listen to the intriguing conversation, about the folks who are trying to get into the job force, and they may be kind of latched to the home. Well, one of the things you do at a data center property like this is you have a technical support staff, where you're, you're calling in to get to see about truck rolls and different things that are taking place. And so we operate a twenty-four by seven contact center that is, that houses all these people taking these calls. And one of the things that we do is we actually all have people who we can allow them to work from home. We instrument them with their computers, they allow them to have their broadband connectivity, you can work from home. We train people, we do that, so sometimes these limitations of where the people actually have to do their job, we can put them into a building that we own, or we could actually have them work out of their home, which is actually a pretty interesting thing. So the jobs, we were looking at twenty-five new jobs, I got that twenty, and the thing here you have to understand is that there's this tug-of-war of how you use the space in a data center. Ideally, you want to use the space as much as you can for the IT assets. So when it comes to push come to sub, the IT assets win, because it's like building the Space Shuttle. Space Shuttle's an incredible piece of technology, but they only had room for seven astronauts in there. So if you give up space for putting more people in, you got something else has to give. So what we don't know is that power density that comes into the building for these computers is, if, if we put more density of power into a given piece of space, we're going to free up real estate for putting in office space. So what we just don't know now is where that goes, is, are we going to have more on computer, or are we going to have more for office? So be conservative here, we readjusted that number. As Shelley indicated, what we're, what we need to do here is the abatement, the P One Ninety-eight was awarded to Telnet, to Cybernetics. Edge Connect's now our investor partner, is now the property owner, so we need to get the change of that name. The investment period for doing this, we're looking to see that extended so we can get the investment in due to some of the delays, and we're also looking for the abatement period to also shift as well by a year, which allows us to retain the six years that we were, we were awarded. That's because the clock started ticking in two thousand and thirteen, and there was no activity in two thousand and thirteen. Actually, all the money started getting spent in two thousand and fourteen. So that's kind of an up-to-date thing. I'm very proud of this project we ever put together, a lot of, to make this kind of thing work, it takes a lot of talented people, it takes a lot of inspired people to bring things like this into fruition. I'll just take a point out, this is an asset that keeps on giving. It really does. It's meant to last for generations. Technology is designed in a way to keep on getting refreshed with this new thing. I mean, think about your computers that you have now, you have to continually bring in new assets all the time, and it goes for generations. So the tax base becomes strong and stable for generations to come. Really, that's how it's designed.
So I would like to add that these, the data centers that we have in the city are also large tractors to many corporations throughout the area, many of them store data at these locations, they bring a tremendous amount of talented people to our city on a regular basis, many of them house their data here, and they want to be close to their data, so they take office space within our community as well, they take space into these facilities. So it's a real win-win for everybody. Mark Adams from Open County is here in support of this project, and at this time, we're asking that we have a public hearing, set a public hearing for the April twenty-seventh council meeting. Move it forward, send it forward. Is there any attention, any remarks, or any questions?
I can do that, one question, sure. May, it may be part of your business, may not be. I was listening to the radio the other day, and we ran into a couple of guys in Detroit that said they invented the new Internet that's a hundred times faster than, than the current Internet speed, and, and Dan Gilbert has bought into the thing. Are you familiar with this at all?
Yeah, in Detroit, I believe the company's called Rocket Fiber or something like that, something like that.
Yes.
Yeah. So there are, there, if I understand your question properly, there is no reinvention of the Internet per se in terms of speeds. What it means is by laying out fiber optic cable, we're able to get... What it means is by laying out fiber optic cable, we're able to get more bandwidth over fiber optic cable than what would be over a copper plant that's in, probably in the city. So, my understanding here, what they're trying to convey is that they're gonna be able to boost the amount of bandwidth quite substantially that can go into the buildings and properties around the Detroit area. But the internet's, so, the internet then, I guess, goes faster in that regard too.
If, if that's the case, if it's only what's on the end of the fiber optics, I mean, everybody's known that for a hundred years, all you gotta do is speed up the ends because fiber can take anything you get, because it's only just lights blinking. My question would be, we've got a fiber ring around here in Southville. Is it something that we ought to be concerned with as a council, as a body, as the administrators of the city of Southville, that to help our businesses be more successful, which would attract even more businesses?
Oh, absolutely. It's like, this information age, I mean, if it is imperative that we get high-quality bandwidth to be prevalent throughout the business community. So, to whatever extent, that, that's why one of these data center properties is important because it encourages fiber build-out. It says, hey, I can then now go and afford to go and connect those to the businesses that are in the area. So, the more that as a city and as an area that we're creating high-quality bandwidth for affordable prices to businesses, that, this is an ongoing activity. So, whatever those assets are, we want to make that happen. I'd like to point out one other thing here is that why do these things, why are they important in our backyard? Okay, so, let's say that you have that fiber optic cable into your business and you're trying to conduct your business, but that data center that you're, you have all your information in, you're storing your accounts, your inventory records, whatever it is you're doing in the business, and that data center is in Denver. Well, the speed of light still is the speed of light. And what you try to do now and what we're trying to do here is you want to bring the depot of data as close to the people as possible, because then that latency, you get a big pipe and now that time it takes to transact it is far more efficient. And that matters, it really, really does. Because when you're moving around huge amounts of information, you don't want to be schlepping it across thousands of miles if you can have it right in your backyard.
They found that out at the stock exchange.
Yes, yes. You want it close.
Thank you.
Okay, without any opposition, we'll move forward to our April twenty-seventh meeting and also blow.
Okay.
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Always development.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you with us?
No.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Ari Liebowitz is here to discuss a potential redevelopment of two parcels on Twelve Mile Road between Northwestern Highway and Sherridale and Franklin Roads. And the properties are currently zoned R2 residential. He owns the property that extends to Northwestern Highway. I'll let him get into that a little bit in more detail. The land use plan shows one of the parcels for medium, moderate density, single family and one, one of them is local mixed use. Actually, the Sherridale cul-de-sac was envisioned by the council as being developed into some type of office corporate park with some mixed use.
Can you give the orientation again for Twelve Mile Road?
This is Twelve Mile Road here, Northwestern Highway, and the property is located between Franklin and Sherridale Street, which is the cul-de-sac here, Twelve Mile Road. And here's the aerial, which actually shows what we call him. He currently owns the Ari L office building, which is off Northwestern, but we connected to the property. And with that, Mr. Liebowitz, I would ask you to come, to come ahead. Now, again, this is for discussion purposes only, no consensus votes would be given, but if Mr. Liebowitz has a comfort to move forward with this, he is under a due diligence period and wanted to come before the council before he invests any more time or money moving forward. This would require rezoning at a future date and coming back for rezoning and possibly site plan approval. But again, it's to give him the ability to get a feel at least, not, not a consensus necessarily, whether or not he wants to proceed with due diligence.
Thank you. If you're being honest here, again, your name and business address for the record.
My name is Ari Liebowitz. My offices are two nine three five five Northwestern Highway, Southville, Michigan. I've been a developer and a real estate entrepreneur in the city itself for close to forty years. I've been involved in those redevelopment opportunities and I hope that I can get an indication from you what the council appetite is with regards to what we are considering. Just to give you a little background, over about eight years ago, I've acquired the complex of office buildings on Northwestern, which used to be known as the Carson Center and consists of two buildings on Northwestern Highway. One used to be a jeweler and the other one is an office building that is just next to what the art gallery is and then a large office building in the back that have been in dire straits at the time. I've acquired them, redeveloped and repositioned them and I'm pleased to report that they're today pretty much fully occupied. We are in the process of repositioning the building that previously was occupied by the jeweler who was since vacated. Our interest in the property that is the subject of today's discussion is because we are abutting those properties on the south side. So, I hope you can hear me, but this is, this is the complex that consists of the three buildings and we own the property that this area currently has a screening wall that splits up property to some degree. We are under contractual agreement to acquire these two parcels and this particular council. And we were looking at possibly in the future doing some more consolidation depending on the availability of other parcels and demonstrated the possibility of developing two office-type of buildings consisting of two and three stories of approximately forty-five thousand square feet or thirty thousand square feet. This particular complex is about eighty thousand square feet between the three buildings. And one of the questions that I was raising with planning administration is, I'm with the master plan, it identified this area to be eventually developed as a local mixed use, but these two parcels were still shown as single family to remain. So, my concern is that I want to understand what the thinking behind it is and will the city support to incorporate these in the master plan that has been indicated in prior discussion in plans future plans for the city. So, it gives me some concerns and part of my request to have this study session to try to get an indication of why these are set aside and what the thinking behind it is that I can offer in that regards.
Are you looking at developing or are you looking at just purchasing the property to?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm looking to develop them in the near future, assuming I can get the proper support. I would say it probably is two years away. I'm actually going through the whole process of getting the various procedures going in order to get final approvals. But before I get too deep into it, I wanted to make sure that I'm going in the right direction.
Yeah, it's not clear to me. Are those two in that middle plan there, are those vacant properties or are the buildings there now? No.
These, these two are vacant. This has a house on it.
One house.
One house.
But other than that?
This used to have a house, but it's been demolished many years ago and it's now vacant. This is vacant. If you look at the aerial photo over here, there's a house over here.
Can't, can't see that far.
And that parcel in itself is about two and a half acres.
Okay.
There is another house over here, a different parcel. So, the way, some housing is scattered in there, they're mostly large parcels, but with the exception of these two, the entire area is dedicated, at least on the master plan, to be developed on the local mixed use. And these are identified not to, I just don't understand why. And I'm trying to get some direction.
My, my suspicion is, so if you were here, is that because there's a large water body on there and because multiple families located just to the east, that might have been just planned as, as almost a buffer area and that, you know, there's an existing residential. But I think if you look long-term, down Twelve Mile, you have large, large parcels. Obviously, the council did foresee the cul-de-sac as being developed with local mixed use and office. We are in the process of updating our master plan, so during this next phase, it might be appropriate to, to, you know, look at this whole corridor for redevelopment purposes. The residents would remain there until such time that they sold the property. This actually would be an improvement in the property value for, for that two and a half acre residential, should the council see that area being developed. And offices is of relatively mild land use, you know, given, given that Twelve Mile corridor. And if, should this go forward at site plan, a buffer could be provided adjacent to the multiple family. So, I think it is possible and plausible to consider rezoning this for office mixed use in the future.
Well, how long has the parcel been, they've never been developed at all?
Well, you know, being that they've been residential properties for many years, then obviously no other development has been contemplated. I know that this parcel here has had a large home many years ago and has been demolished maybe, I'm guessing, about fifteen, twenty years ago. So, this has been actually abandoned, this residential, meaning there was a house, got demolished. This has no housing on it and the rest of them, as I said, they do have some scattered housing. There've been some houses in this area that have been torn down and are now vacant lots. So, it's kind of a transition area in the way I see it because there's been office coming from this direction and this area along Pro question is already developed as commercial properties. So, it's kind of, it's almost begging a direction. And I think that being that this is a major artery, Twelve Mile Road, Kingston is right over here and as I said, this is always developed down alley is office, that it would make it a more coherent development if this area gets developed because it's, it's neither here or there, as you said.
Interesting.
Yeah. I, I think that it's, I'm going to say, we have so much office in sitting now that, that they have a choice now of location and, and access to wherever they want to go. In fact, I was just at the, at the, this whole forest building this morning and that thing's almost all empty. But I see that, like, I, I just think that to the south, it's all residential. San Marino, San Marino and the, and all the properties that are, are east of San Marino are all residential. And, and a, that little townhouse area there keeps that area kind of residential. And I, I could see more townhouses there than that good offices. I know you're talking about a lot of office days, please take forty-seven thousand?
Yeah, well, I mean, you got, you can have, you were more than that. I guess from my perspective, I'm not gonna go ahead and speculate and build something that has the business demand for the market.
Raylon.
The question is.
George Weston, you know there's a lot of vacancies.
There is, yeah. And we worked hard in keeping our school, so I, I like to what you said, but.
I go to that one building, I refer my radiologist. Really nicely done. I can say that, but I'm just concerned that, that I like to see residential, opposite residential, try to keep San Marino and those other buildings that are south of that kind of, in residential neighborhood. That's just my opinion. I, I don't know what the future is, but I think it's more residential than it is, is awesome.
Well, first, I'd like to say I respect your opinion and I appreciate your input. That's why I came here for it. What, what I want to convey is I'm not particularly fixed on office. My intent is to see if the city will allow me to develop into something other than residential.
Do you want some idea of where the city's going and, and you know where you're going?
Right.
I'm just saying is that you go down that, in half the offices that are closer to Pro question, you get into that little area there that, that is San Marino and the development to the south and east of San Marino. You get a nice feeling of residential to date. The building on the corner, Kingston and Twelve Mile Road is, used to have a farm, used to be a farmhouse there. It, it's, it's kind of a nicely designed building with a veteran area and that. It, it kind of blends in with the ranch rooms across the street. So, just my opinion is, I, I would just soon see, and I know it's a nice piece of land, but I think there's a lot of unique residential's needed in the city that we don't have presently. People today say that we built into six. It's kind of a nicely designed building with that area in it and that. It kind of blends in with the ranch rooms across the street. So just my opinion is, I would just soon see, and I know it's a nice piece of land, but I think there's a lot of unique residential's needed in the city that we don't have presently. People today say that we built in the sixties and no longer are we that new residential for people to purchase. Those people who are looking for homes now look for something other than what they can find in Southfield presently. And that would be a great area for, for that kind of housing to go through that people who want to live in Southfield but cannot find the right residential.
Okay, Ms. Seymour, and then Ms....
I just have to say that Don said it all. Don, Mr. Calhoun said it all. And I agree with him.
I agree with Don as well. I always thought that those properties would either be townhomes, just got condos to the east. And across, right across the street, there's another, getting the name of the complex, but I always saw those as condo projects. I do appreciate what you did in the back. I've been to your building and I know you did a nice job on that. I'm curious about the water feature. That's part of that Artisan Spring. Where does that water end up? It percolates all through that area.
Well, there is, there is a well that's kept. Yeah. Kept, known and operational. And some of it stays in the pond, which is, this area here is this large pond. Some of it overflows and overspills, but that's because it hasn't been maintained. It's been neglected to the point of American City that this used to be a large state of sorts.
Yeah, I know that.
But it was not taken enough to...
You know, but there's something in between. There's something in between, you know. I mean, you go around to see the new houses being built and the younger people are moving in those homes. They're a different style and they are different, they're both up differently. In other words, we used to have a dining room, a living room and all that. They don't have that anymore. Now they have a great room and kitchen and that, and that kind of a thing. Everything kind of blends and it becomes more livable. But people use dining rooms anymore. That's a big line up.
So I'm giving the consensus of that. The city's more inclined to say maybe not essential.
Well, anyway, I also disagree with the mayor as well as my colleagues. I'm looking for redevelopment. I'm not tied to that being a residential, a residential. That's my opinion. I'm looking for redevelopment. Bring to, to, should you decide to go forward.
Appreciate that. Any other...
I think after what we saw earlier today, I've got to feel more inclined to support the municipal position of some of the colleagues here to put the intrusion into the neighborhood, possible perception of that. Not as a first option. I wouldn't be opposed to that development, but having looked at different options first off, I wouldn't want to get any impression right now that I'm kind of leaning, I would be leaning against something like that at this point.
One real bad swing.
Like I say, I'm not firm on that, but I'm just saying is, from a planning standpoint and seeing what people want in Southfield especially, you know, we are losing residents because the parents, the people who are leaving, their parents today are looking at a different style of a house. And other communities supply it. West Bloomfield, Pymington Hills, the new development there in Novi. Not necessarily mansions, but just a different style of home that the young people are looking for. And if they don't find it here, you know, it can have a diverse kinds of development. You know, everything here was built in the sixties, the seventies and it, you know, it really, you know, one that sticks out is one by Green Delta. And it was, that one, my gosh, that one was a freak of nature, that one. Yes.
All those nine mile?
I, I, I respect what you're saying. Let me say this in a way candid. This is a very difficult piece of land. One is that land issues, woodland issues, terrain issues. They have to be built in a residential light. It would take somebody very creative and, somebody who really wants it badly because it's a difficult development. So unless there is some commercial incentive to take it in a direction...
You don't have a, well, you don't have a clean house you have over there. You can bottle water and make a fortune.
Well, there is a house, they're still doing it right now.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Young.
The house, I think the house over here, yeah, the farmhouse, he's still bottling water. But it's really a tough park, very, very tough park. So I was hoping to get a little one of the section.
You came on the wrong night.
Well, it is one of the, a long time ago, you didn't like them, you weren't looking for them. That's how you get them. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I thank you all on the consideration.
Okay, Charles, well, we're gonna make an adjustment in the last two items on the council portion. We're gonna reschedule them for a COW, for another COW, so that will come back to us.
My address is Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4037. At the last, on March twenty-seventh, I pointed out that this council, this year, under your leadership, Madam President, violated the Open Meetings Act by approving council yearly meeting schedule at the fourth council meeting of this calendar year instead of the first meeting of this calendar year. Sad to say, Madam President, after my presentation, you stated that no laws were broken. But I am here to set the record straight. I have in hand the minutes of the first four council meetings of this calendar year, 2015. If you read the minutes carefully, you will find that council yearly meeting schedule was approved on page twenty-four of the fourth meeting of this calendar year. That is televised meeting of January twenty-sixth, 2015. And I quote from Resolution 2015.20 of the fourth meeting. Motion by Cyrus, second by Cruz, resolve that council thus hereby adopt the city council meeting schedule for the 2015 calendar year. Motion passed, unquote. Likewise, in 2014, under Council President Jordan's leadership, the 2014 council yearly meeting schedule was also illegally approved at the second meeting of the calendar year on January twenty-first, 2014, at a special meeting of the COW. And I quote from Resolution C-08, 2014, of the second meeting. Motion by Pathosik, second by Seymour, resolve that council thus hereby approve the 2014 council meeting schedule as presented, motion passed, unquote. The state law that has been capitulately broken is the Open Meetings Act, Public Act 257 of nineteen seventy-six, Section 5, Subsection 2. And I quote, "For regular meetings of a public body, there shall be posted within ten days after the first meeting of the public body at each calendar year, a public notice stating the dates, times and places of its regular meetings," unquote. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Testing one-two, testing one-two. Pamela Gerald P. O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4037-0155. For the residents listening to my voice via YouTube, I can be reached at (248) 646-0439. I am just a phone call away. Mister, Madam President, you seem to have an obsession or fixation with my residency. Close your eyes and picture this. The segregationists in Alabama were also obsessed with residency, Dr. King's residency. They were upset because Dr. King was not a resident of Selma. Passion has no address. If Dr. King had not gone to Selma, where would those residents be today? Dr. King was told by the council president and other city leaders in Selma repeatedly that he did not live in Selma, yet he persevered and advocated for the residents of Selma despite their attempts to make him feel unwelcome. Madam President, myself and the people in this room are expecting you to say something malicious, dastardly and sarcastically, like this speaker is not Dr. King, nor can she be compared to Dr. King. I would agree with that. I am not Dr. King, but I am and have been an independent voice for the residents of Southfield. Some have referred to me as an unofficial ombudsman. I've had my eyes on Southfield for a long time. Based on the number of calls I've received over the years and the resident feedback, they like my style, my approach and my look. They say that I have been a problem solver, a difference maker, but more importantly, they have seen me at these meetings. They have heard my voice for almost thirty years and have blessed me with the name, they're an independent voice for Southfield. I am welcome. So you see, Madam President, despite the arrows and darts about my residency, I am still here at these meetings. Even you, Madam President, cannot deny that fact. I have a question that I know you won't be able to answer, and that is, if you were not a member of city council or being paid to be here at these meetings, would you be here like me? Pastor Jordan, no weapons formed against me shall prosper and every tongue that rises up against me in judgment will be condemned. Irritation is an invitation to elevation. Elevation requires much examination. I have examined myself and I have been elevated, have you? That's the difference between you and me. Passion has no address, passion has no address. And that's under three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, the next person is going to vote for council. Tyrone Vance. He put a lot, he submitted an email asking to be a part of this, I didn't know that. The next person is Richard Melton.
It's been a long night, a lot of good stuff going on tonight. I just have a casual observation that I thought I'd like to share with people because they never really get it discussed. I've lived in Southfield more than thirty years and have always considered it to be a very beautiful city, very diversified geographically and, you know, developed areas and urban areas and so forth. And I don't think that it still isn't a very beautiful city. But one thing that has happened here that is not exclusive to Southfield is kind of the incessant array of lineage that we have. I kind of refer to it as the uglification of America. You look at it on some of the streets, there are so many wires that it's actually hard to believe, it's really a distraction. And it's not just the wires, some of them are like pipes and they have Allison and strain release and other boxes up there. And in many cases, it starts to look like an industrial park. And I go, how did all this happen? And it's not just in Southfield, it's in many, many places. I don't know, it was happenstance, lack of attention, cheapest way out. For those that are old enough to remember, one of the large freeway was built in Detroit. It was very expensive to put in the ground, but a decision was made to do that because it was going to be much more aesthetically pleasing than kind of the elevated highways that many cities had. You know, choked off the neighborhoods, added a lot more noise and general pollution. So anyways, DTE has come out in my area and lowered the cable lines, which are the second tier of lines on the coast. They brought them down another four feet. That's in my front yard and in my backyard. And I have a lovely backyard which I share with about five different neighbors. All kind of come together in a round, high shape. And we have almost like a park-like setting back there. Years ago, we could play football, throw the ball around, the frisbee, whatever. Now it's like you can't do it because the lines are too low and you can't throw the ball that high. If it comes down another four feet, you know, they hit me in the head. I don't know what the resolution is to this. I don't know if there's anything we can do, you know, anything lancing or, you know, just whatever. But, you know, it just occurs to me that this is like a real thing and I never hear it really talked about. And it really is a beautification thing. One last thing that maybe does need some regulation, maybe we need a city ordinance that doesn't already exist.
Mr. Melton, your time is up.
And I add just one quick thing. The satellite dishes in that five come together backyard, some years ago, I forget which provider it was, maybe, you know, the Dish Network, they put that sucker right in the middle of the backyard. And I look out my window and go, what the heck? You know, you spoil this whole thing, put it there right in the middle. Finally got one of the neighbors to end up capitulating and putting it up on his roof. But I noticed other houses have dishes that are not on the roof, but they're like right in the front, close to the house. And I don't know if we have a city ordinance or not, but I think you need that for all around the house because we don't want a lot of houses putting satellite dishes in the middle of the front lawn. But in some cases, the middle of the back lawn isn't appropriate either. So do we have an answer to that?
Well, this is public conversation, you're giving your...
Well, I'm gonna let you talk.
All right. And I'm not gonna talk. The next person is, is Lawrence Burko, he's here. Okay, there's no one else. Council or any other items brought to council.